That's why I wanted to get started. I appreciate everybody being here. Now, we were told, as we were thinking about, man, we had all these networking meetings. What type of food would pastors like? And they said, we heard cinnamon rolls and danishes and things like that, but I'm not seeing a whole lot of that being passed around here. So either everybody has got together and went on a diet, or we were lied to in danishes and everything that everyone wants. So, welcome to Woodland Park. I know we value this time to be with you guys and get a chance to tell our story, get a chance to visit back and forth, get a chance to just kind of hear your thoughts and what's going on. And so we'll go around and introduce ourselves. If I got some introductions first that I will make. I'll start with myself. I'm Del Garrett. I'm the Chief of Staff, Co-Interim Superintendent, it's a really long business card. And we, I've been here forever. So I started like when I was one year old, and then I went to kindergarten here and then all of that stuff. Did leave for about 12 years when I said, I gotta get out of Woodland Park. You know, kid thing. So when did I have my baby? I didn't have my baby. My wife had the babies. But I've been in Wenatchee, Washington, if you know where Wenatchee is. If you don't know where it is, I don't blame you. And then we decided to come back. And so all of our kids came, it was about 2001 when we came back. And so we've been, when we got back here, I was teacher, coach. I was a athletic director. I was a principal, HR director. And then the titles rapidly changed after that. So that's me. Also with us today, we have, it looks like three board members have come now. So we have Vice President David Illingworth is here with us. President of the Board, David Russell-Holt is here. And Director Cassie Kimbrel is here. Did I say that right?
With her lovely daughter.
With, um, this is River.
River, hi.
This is my daughter, River.
Does River like danishes and cinnamon rolls?
She does. If you don't mind, I'll get that set up.
Do you need to do that?
No, it's great. And then joining us from the district, we have various positions. We have Karen Hamlow over here. Karen is, I don't even know the title. She's part Assistant Principal of the High School, part Curriculum Supervisor. So her title's really long. Here at the district office, providing support. So she's new to that role this year. She's been an Assistant Principal for a long time. Also in our room here is Kevin Burr. Mr. Kevin Burr is the Principal of the High School. And so thanks for joining us here. Next to him is Principal Yvonne Going. She's Principal of the Middle School. And then sitting next to her is Ms. Katie Redford. She's the Principal of the Summit. I know probably everybody knows all these people and you're like, yeah, no, we know. My job was to do this, so that's what I'm doing. In the back there, we see Lindsay Crawl. You've probably all met her and talked with her. At least you received an email from her inviting you to this, maybe talk to her. She's our Public Information Officer. So she's in charge of the marketing and the communications. And this is her year and a half. No, I mean, you're almost a year.
February.
But not even close to a year. So she's, she knew that she lost and she's doing great. Mr. Miles Tuttle, who also has a super long name. Not the name, but the title of this guy.
Yeah, Miles, it's not very long.
You're right.
My middle name is longer.
His middle name is that. Oh, he's got four names. So Miles is our Director of Technology and Operations. So he's in charge of all of that. And then finally, Tina Catherine. And Tina is also the Co-Superintendent Chief Academic Officer. It's odd, how many years do you have?
Twenty-eight years in the district. So I started at the Middle School as a teacher, a coach at the Middle School, both with staff and kids, Assistant Principal at the Middle School. And then I think I've had, aside from business, I think I've had every, about every title here in central office.
Maybe some to recruit.
Yeah, education, effectiveness, technologies, secondary schools, stuff. A few titles. So my tag just says District Administrator, so I can stop making new names now.
All right. And then all the way over here, Ms. Kelly Haven, who's the most knowledgeable of the district in any capacity. She's been here thirty, thirty years. So lots of, lots of changes. She is our Executive Minister, Assistant Secretary to the Board. Did I get that title almost right?
That's good.
So why don't you just take a few minutes here to go around and introduce yourselves. Just who you are and what church you're representing, so that we get a chance to get to know who's in the room. Yeah, so let's start over here.
Phil Brown, and at least at the moment, I am representing Woodland Park Community Church with a number of others. I am the Youth Director there.
I'm Jay Farwell, also with Woodland Park Community Church. I'm the Family Pastor there. I'm also with Woodland Park Community Church. I'm Jim Van Marne, the Executive Pastor. And I have one in the high school, two in the middle school, and one in Columba, or two in Columba. And two more to come.
Oh, good.
There you go.
Thank you.
Trying to keep everybody employed.
I'm also with Woodland Park Community Church. My name's Ryan Wickstrom. And I'm here getting ready to go start a church in Kirk Grealish.
Good for you.
My name is Joel Daly. Moab and Outpastor Care is family church close to City Market.
Great.
First Caldwell, Woodland Park Community Church Care.
Russ Feisiger, Highland Bible Church.
Kent Lane from Highland Bible Church, same thing. Kirk Grealish Street at Woodland Park Community Church as the Senior Pastor.
And can I just say, I talked to Scott Park this morning from Impact, and he had a surprise guest come in. And he couldn't wait for this morning.
Well, if he comes in late, we'll have to obviously sit on two sides. We've divided the room and just moved. So just kind of.
Should we make Margaret a move?
Yes. Yeah, we can see. All right. Well, thanks for coming. I appreciate it. So as we talked about, this is our opportunity for networking, the process of making connections and building relationships. We want to do this with multiple organizations and cohorts of people across the district. And the pastors and the leaders of our youth, I'm just a perfect group. Right? We have a shared common interest in what we do, right? Building young people into solid adults, right? We might take it differently, but that shared common interest is what's really important. And so it's great that we get a chance to network and build those relationships. And we'll get a chance to figure out how we can build that relationship as we move on here. I already did that, so I went out order, but I'll skip that one. Today, we're going to go through some points of pride. These are the things that, in these different categories, we're just going to hit that are just highlights. We could set, if we did a point of pride of our school district, we could really honestly set this meeting for a two-day period, honestly. Because there's so much that we're proud of. There's so many great things that have happened. The transitions that have happened are all amazing for our students, amazing for our community. And we're very proud of that. And we're going to focus on just those areas. So we're going to do some academic points of pride. We're going to hit on some of our extracurricular stuff, social, emotional, educated talent, and communication.
So the first one is me. Good to talk about it. I spent a lot of time in this pillar of our strategic plan. And really, the thing is, I'm suburban about it, it's high school Assistant Principal. Is over the last couple of years, we've seen a steady increase in our test scores for SAT, which that means that students are ready for college. They don't have to go and take remedial classes. And so this is really something that we focused on and we really have gone after over the last couple of years. And this last year, all of our grades, so freshmen, sophomores, and juniors all take it and they all scored like really record highs for us and are just making great progress. So increasing that rigor is really what we're going after across all of our buildings. The Middle School as well has gone after and made some big changes to get students ready. And so we're just excited about that progress. Conferencing course opportunities. In a time where other districts, other school systems have gotten rid of PE teachers and art teachers and music teachers, we've been able to keep them and really have a full, robust program at our elementary schools, all the way to our high schools. And we're able to include things, like there's a new scene program at the Middle School.
Oh, gosh, it's so amazing.
And just starting, like the facility just got built. And so we're excited to see what comes out of that. We have our engineering classes at the high school and welding. There's master classes at elementary schools. And there's also things like Think Tank and Summit Studio, which are really passion projects that kids get to dig into and do a project-based learning experience. And so it's not just rote memory anymore, where you just sit in rows and learn things, but students get to actually be hands-on and doing projects that they're interested in. The last one there is career development. We have a new program this year at the elementary schools, K eight. It's called World of Work. And teachers that are trained in various careers go in and talk to students about their interests and what they're excited about, what they want to learn about, and do some training on what kind of a future job might you be interested in. And so the idea is to start them young, so that they're thinking about what career path they might want, even in an early age. Then, of course, moving up to the high school, we have twenty-five different concurrent enrollment or dual enrollment, which means you get college credit at the same time you take high school classes. And also students get to go out and do internship experiences or apprenticeships, depending on what it is and what they're going into, and get ready to launch. So by the time they walk across that graduation stage, they really have a career path in mind and know they need college for it, career school, trade school, whatever it is to be ready for their career.
I think an exciting thing too, if you get to come to the high school, is to visit, we've built a college, Career College Center. So it's staffed with a staff member there. And we bring in, that's where our reps come to talk with kids, whether it's military or college or trade school reps. In addition, she often will open up the center on our rates. And kids can come in and look on their CalMapp or for college or apply for scholarships. And she's there really to guide them. So it's a fun, it kind of reminds me of when you're in college and you had a college, a career center that you could go into and find out information about that next step. And so it's exciting to see that offered, that center at our high school. And we invite parents in. They do FAFSA nights. If anyone had to do the FAFSA or to fill out the financial aid for your kids to go to college, we bring parents in and put them on our computers and we're like, we'll walk you through it. Because it can be confusing. So that's awesome too, that taking that step-by-step with our parents.
And then just one plug, this is off-script because I have the controller. But one opportunity that we could really use and help with is those that are directly working with youth, especially those that are graduating, high school seniors. If you, if we could really use help pushing them into this career center to start looking for scholarships. We have fairly substantial scholarships, four by a thousand, something like that, or more.
Three point five million last year.
Three point five, what we gave last year. But what I'm saying is some individual ones where we might have a $5,000 scholarship, say maybe the wagon boss or something like that. And we may only have two kids apply for it. And so we could really use the push to say, hey, guys, there's some competitive ways to get there. So that's just a continuing, sorry, that was off-script.
No, that's good. Yeah.
But say, hey, there's one.
I'm going to stand over here. I don't want to stand behind everybody. I understand. I'll stand behind Kelly. She gets to see me like all day, all the time. So I'm giving her a break up here, so she doesn't have to look at me now. So outside of just the regular school day, we have a whole lot of extracurricular opportunities to be proud of. And I know our middle school principal is here. We have an elementary school representative. Kevin just left, so he won't be able to correct me if I miss anything. But so the other two, they'll be eager to add anything that I forget.
We like to talk.
They do. So I want to highlight some of, first, we can go back to last year, the '21, '22 school year and talk about some of those things. And then we'll talk about this fall a little bit. But just at the, starting at the high school, we have a whole bunch of students that were awarded All-Conference Awards, First Team, Honorable Mention, including like All-State Academic Awards. And then we had athletic teams that sent at least one participant to state. Like golf did that, cheer did the, the cross-country, swim, wrestling, track and field. And then volleyball won the league championship. Cheer, I guess the big place to go is Florida for the national competition. They competed there. Swim, they had, there was one swimmer that competed at state. Wrestling, three men to state, all three placed. Sorry, there's a lot here, so I'm just running through them all. Track and field, five went to state. One athlete won. Mountain bike team won several honors in their league. Band competed at state. Forensics for the, I don't know, how many years in a row?
Like thirty.
Thirty? Thirty-one. Thirty-one years in a row. Yeah. So something to keep in account. Thirty-one years in a row competed in Nationals. And so that's kind of perennial, like the thing that they do.
Had a duo team place seventeenth in the nation this year.
Yeah. And then welding, you all are, maybe you're like me, didn't know we had state competition for welding. Four students competed in state welding. And we find, and there are a lot of stats behind this, and our high school isn't any different as far as statistics that show that students that participate in sports or activities have a higher GPA than those that don't. It's something that boosts their academic performance. Now, it's fall 2022. At the high school alone, we have 260 students participating in athletics and activities. So that's nearly half of the student body that will, that are participating in one, at least one activity. Many of them are participating in multiple activities. A lot of them don't just participate in one. And already, we have a student that's qualified for state in golf. State competitions next week for that. At the middle school, we're right in the middle of, we have cross-country, volleyball, football, mountain bike club, and then the winter of forensics as well. Boys' basketball, girls' basketball, wrestling, spring and track. Yeah. And then the middle school has a lot of other after-school opportunities. Yvonne can probably speak to some of the other things we have. But those are the sports that we offer at the middle school. Yeah, you want to talk about any of the others?
Yes. So we also have our jazz band, our Odyssey Choir, so our higher-level audition, jazz band and choir. And we're actually creating a lot of things during the day because middle school kids can't drive yet. So we don't want to exclude kids who may be really far out and need to ride buses in. So we have some that start a little bit before school, but they go into the school day. So lots of lunchtime points or during our like thirty-five-minute mentor block at the end of the day. We pull kids during that time as well. We also latched here, tested adding a C squad to one of our sports. So this year, we have C squad going. And we have three teams in volleyball right now, which means that our sixth graders can now participate in those things. We had not the best idea in the world and decided to do two C teams for volleyball. That's not going to happen for basketball. It's just too many kids for it to be authentic and have them get some good participation and practice in. So but we still, I mean, we increased it by, we'll be increasing it by a third and maybe sixth graders involved as well, which definitely helps the GPA and helps them learn how to be a student and an athlete, to think at one time, and a family member. And I know most of them, I mean, they know you guys when you come into our buildings. So I know they're involved in church activities and everything else. So we have, right now, tech deck, those little finger skateboards. Do they drive you guys crazy?
My kids don't do that.
Oh, my God. So we have, so the kids ask, what kind of club? You know, we're like, what kind of clubs do you want? So we have a tech deck club that they go in at lunch. But the cool part is they design tracks for these little like finger skateboards.
Engineers, future engineers.
Future engineers. They, they, yeah, they're like this big. And I took one from a kid yesterday because it was social studies, not tech deck time. And I was like, okay, it's architectural. But I did a play with it. I put it in my pocket. And it played with it very long. So but really, we have kids come in. We have a chess club getting ready to start. And we're just like, you know, what do you guys want to do? So we let them drive a lot of it for some of the other clubs that aren't necessarily extracurricular, but extra during the day curricular.
And if you want to watch, I'm going to lay money that you might have a league champion girls' cross-country runner.
Yes.
Thursday out at Meadowwood.
Yep.
Sixth grader.
Yep.
Might win the league cross-country meet. So she's won most of her meets. So that'll be exciting because we're hosting that. So if you're wondering what to do next Thursday around four o'clock, we'll be running the league cross-country meet at Meadowwood Park.
And if you want to get a sneak peek of her ready, tomorrow's our color run. At 2:30, I'm sure she'll be running the track. You can throw color at her.
And at the elementary level, there are lots of opportunities too. And I'll list some of them. We have choir and student council, and there are after-school PE opportunities and some before-school PE opportunities. I think Gateway has guitar lessons that they're doing, the Kednott Yes Club. Columbine has their mountain bike club. All schools have their land sharks running club, their Science Matters Summit. You have Taekwondo.
Destination Imagination.
And K Kids. And that's just, that's just some of, I mean, there's a whole lot of opportunities.
Just a smattering.
Yes.
Yeah, we work hard to get kids involved. And we're actually pretty fortunate at Summit because our buses come at 3:50, but we dismiss at three. And so we have this chunk of time where we have our bus students. And so we've worked hard to build up our club offerings. So kids who are riding the bus have more opportunities. And we found like, oh, like dismissal's at three, but we just keep all of our kids until 3:50. Because a lot of our car riders, our moms, like, well, I want to do that too. No, I'm also Summit senior, or I'm also going to do land sharks, but.
Do you have the double dutch?
No. Oh, our skyskippers? We don't have skyskippers. But we have jump roping in one of our Summit Studios. So Summit Studio is a club, it's passion-based and opportunities for kids during the school day. So I mean, I know it happens at Summit, but it also happens at Columbine and Gateway, where it's like, how can we give kids opportunities throughout their school day? So we're not limiting anybody's access.
So all this to say, the school day ends and there is a lot that happens that happens outside of the school day. And that doesn't, I mean, there's a lot to be proud of in each of the schools. A whole lot of opportunities for students. And our goal is to give access to those, to every student that wants to participate.
This was a big thing. It kind of leads into the social, emotional pride. You know, with the pandemic, our kids did have a lot of social things that went away. And so now they're just, they're wanting those more. And so they really want that outlet and to be involved. And we find that that's where kids have lost some skills. And you probably see that too, the pro-social side, the social-emotional side. So providing opportunities to rebuild those skills with our kids. So some pride areas for social-emotional. We have been fortunate over the last few years to write some grants for social-emotional. And we did that before the pandemic and during the pandemic. We were very thankful. We have had over a million grants annually in social-emotional supports. And so if you look at some of the benefits we've had from that in our social-emotional personnel, we have about ten people district-wide. So that means like counselors and social workers. With these grants, we were able to over-double that. So we added fourteen positions to that ten. So if you look at our elementary schools, they actually have two counselors and a social worker at every elementary school. And if you, if you think around the region, most of the schools downtown share a counselor across elementary schools. So we've had three in our elementary schools. And you can kind of set that up to high school and middle school. Middle school's been able to have two, plus a social worker, plus a family community liaison, which I'll talk about, plus a restorative practices coordinator. So we've been able to have a lot of supports for our students, which has been very fortunate. And really, that personnel looks at supporting students. We look at programming, so some of that substance use prevention, social-emotional skills, supports for kids, college and career readiness. That's where that stuff comes from, is from these naked people. So we've been fortunate. We're going to be looking for new grants because a lot of these grants are dropping off. So we're looking to have new grant opportunities to continue with them. We also have been, are quite proud of something that we started last year, which is healthy pro-social activities for students on breaks. So we do have some longer breaks. And so we find that our kids didn't have things to do. And so we were looking for things that were positive for them on those breaks. And so anytime we have a break that's like a long, more than a three-day weekend, we have coordinated with community agencies. And when we get to the end, we're going to be like, would you like to join us? To offer free, so the goal is free, free activities for kids ages three to eighteen. So any kid in the community. We don't care, you know, where you're based. You are invited to these activities. And our goal is that we have something for each kind of band of kids. The little ones, the elementary, the middle school, the high school kids. And some of the hits, so if you look at some of our stats, we had six extended breaks last year. We offered seventy activities. And we had seven hundred and seventy-one registrations for activities. So we're not talking a little endeavor. It's a big endeavor. We went to Golden Bell. One of the hits was Golden Bell. They played blacklight dodgeball. They swam. They rock rhymes. What else was a hit? Another hit was the aquatic center. One time, we had horseback riding. That was a huge hit with kids that had never been able to ride a horse. We do hikes at Mueller. At all the parks, we'll do a guided hike with people. And we invite parents, come join us. We'll all hike together. If they head to the fossil beds, they teach them some stuff while they're out there. We do some hikes. We do arts and crafts. We did bugs, bugs, bugs. And we had so many kids. It was amazing. So but we look to partner with agencies because for us, our staff are on a break. And so we need staff, we need community agencies that will help us with the kids at that time. And what we offer is we'll advertise it. We'll get to the kids. We'll help you organize it. And it's a great connection with the kids out in the community. So at the end, we're going to ask if the churches would like to look at, would you like to join us and sponsor an event for those activities? And then finally, we are able to provide some pretty critical mental health supports for students and families. Sometimes students need more than what schools can offer. And so we have, at our middle school and high school, we have a position called the Family and Community Liaison. And so that person is very aware of resources in the community. And when students or families are struggling, we help get them supports. So we've helped parents get jobs. We've helped families that have lost housing find shelter. Because we don't have a shelter up here. So we've helped find food. We've helped connect families with therapy. So we have that person that helps bridge that. Sometimes too, we give referrals. You need to sign up for food stamps. You need to sign up for Medicaid. But we have families that just don't know how to navigate that. So we'll sit side by side with them and we'll help them fill out those applications and we'll help them turn those things in. Because sometimes that's the hardest thing, is knowing how to navigate systems. So I know we've partnered with churches. I know we've had churches that had kind of the angel network that we'd say, we need this, and they'd say, here you go. So that's another connection that we've loved is sometimes you have resources, we have needs, and you're able to help connect for our families. So we have liaisons that help with that. We also found a real need that some of our kids needed therapy and their parents were unable to take them outside of school. That involves I have to get them to a therapist. I have to be home to take them. I have to be able to drive there. So when our students can't access that, we have actually partnered with some therapists in our community, as well as hired one through our grant, that we offer therapy here in school when parents would like that service and are unable to offer that outside of school. So we've been really proud of being able to really support kids. One of our stats that we continue to hold our breath and knock on wood with is that for two years, we've had zero suicides in our schools. And that sounds like, well, of course, but we can't state that for the previous twenty. So for two years during a time when the nation had historic high suicides, it's the number one cause in Colorado of death in kids, we've had none. And we know that's in thanks also to what you guys do. So we're holding on to that stat and working hard to support our kids. So we're holding on to that stat, working hard to support our kids.
All right. The key to our education is all about, you know, what we have in schools is quality teachers, quality parents, professionals, anybody that's working with kids. And we have, we've got a lot of things that are pride, that we have pride about. And so I just want to hit on a few. So first, the dedicated qualified teachers. So there's a couple of things that I think is an interesting stat. We have approximately 140 certified staff members, certified teachers that are in our schools. And of those, about 32% of them have been with Woodland Park 10 years or more. So that's pretty good dedication. It creates, so funny issue, right? Because usually then what that means is that you have pockets of people who are all going to retire at the same time. So that's kind of a challenge going forward, but it will place them with others to there. We'd like to have all 140 be, you know, 10-plus-year veterans, 20-year, 30-year veterans. So a lot of people dedicated to Woodland Park, and there's a lot of reasons for that. One is, when you come into our schools, our teachers are very collaborative and very, they work together very, very well, and they're friendly, and they share good times, they share, not so good times, but they go through it together to better themselves, they go through PLCs. We have a lot of different individual teacher groups that may form socially or whatever. So we have, we have a lot of teachers, I couldn't tell you the number, but quite a few teachers that live down in Color Springs will literally drive through three school districts that, you know, probably have the higher pay or things like that, so they can be part of us. Because they love our community, they love our schools, they love our kids, and it'd be really easy for them to say, you know what, with gas prices and everything else, I could find a job closer to home, but they don't. They choose to come here. And so I think that speaks volumes as to what type of teachers we have. There's also, I think everybody knows, like pastors, right? You guys don't just work on Sundays, right? Well, Kurt maybe does, I don't know. So, you know, you hear the job, well, teachers, you know, they have, you know, the breaks off, they have summers off. And that's true from their employment standpoint, but they're constantly looking at, some have multiple jobs, they work other jobs, but they're constantly working on improving their skills. And we've had, safe to say, probably over 2,000 hours of professional development that our teachers have sat through on their own. Everything from leaving their family to go to a conference in, do you guys go this year? New Orleans?
Yep.
New Orleans, to go to a conference there so they can get better and get some tools in their tool belt. So they took their time off over the summer, left their families to be better teachers. Then you go back to school, different classes, and PD and we offer easily over 2,000 hours. I would probably venture to say it's closer to 5,000, 6,000, but we're going to learn to track that here soon. But we don't. So they, you know, put in a ton. Another piece of the dedication, we, as you've heard from Miles and Yvonne, who have dedicated the number of activities and opportunities that we have for students, well, those need sponsors. Those need coaches, those need supervisors, right? They need those things. So of all the events that we have sponsored, about 49%, let's just say 50% of our staff, our certified staff, are involved in supervising some of those. So they're doing it outside the classroom as well, helping our kids go through their activities. So that's an amazing dedication. So I really appreciate that. We talked a little bit on the deliberate professional development curriculum work, you know, all those hours they go. We don't just, some of them will just choose things that are of interest to them to develop their tools, but as a district, we have very specific things that we also work towards and bring groups of people to. And so we have the dedicated curriculum work, professional development. We did offer for this year significant pay increases. Just so we're all kind of clear on where that is, every employee in the district, from classified to administration, received eight and a half percent plus an additional $1,200 in their pay. And so when we say we gave it eight and a half percent, that was the percent on their sales, but when you put it all together with the $1,200 and everything, every employee got well over 10% of a raise for this year. So that was a great push, it was, we felt it was needed. Everybody from our board on said, you know what, we have to honor and do something about salary increase. And so we were able to do that. So all of this combined, we talked about why people choose here, we really focus a little on teacher morale, right? We know it's hard. Pastors, you know, it's hard to be a pastor, it's hard to be a teacher, right? There's so many, not only are you delivering curriculum, but you're also, you know, helping kids in their social-emotional, you're helping them find their way in a sport, you're helping whatever. And then there's the outside pressures. You know, this guy comes in and says, hey, you guys have these 20 new initiatives, we're not going to fund it, you just have to do it. Right? And so we always talk about people's plates are full. Well, our teachers' plates are full, and then we put another plate on top of that and fill that one, and we just keep going. So our teachers continually get these pressures. So teacher morale is very important. So at the beginning of the year, last week, as a matter of fact, we sent out our first pulse check, and the pulse check survey, just to ask some different questions about where are we right now in our school in a lot of different areas. And one of them was around teacher morale, like, how did the school year start? Did you feel good about it, those type of things? 88% of our staff indicated that they agreed or strongly agreed that this has been a great start to the school year. So that's a solid number, 88%. And so I don't know that we could probably speak to that from the past, probably lower, but what we've done across the district, and we'll touch on it here in a minute, is we've really leaned into the idea of being better together, right? You can't go into this business, you can't go into your business doing it on your own. So we have, we've leaned into being better together, we've leaned into establishing trust, trust with each other, trust with the community, and we've leaned into moving forward. Everything from the past is just that, it's in the past. Everything is going to be positive going forward, that's our goal. And so our teachers have embraced that, our administrators I know have worked on that, they have posters in their, either some of them are in your lounge or whatever, or staff wrote, man, how are we better together? And there's this whole picture poster of how we can be better together, people are just adding to that. So that's one of the ways we really focus in on, we'll stay focused on teacher morale.
Communication pride, some points that I want to catch on are increased presence on social media. And just to give you guys some terminology as I go through this, when I say reach, that is the number of people who saw your content at least once, so our posts at least once. Engagement is anybody that liked, shared, clicked. Viewed impressions, when I talk about Twitter, it's number of times users saw a tweet. So the district has rapidly increased our presence on social media, and it's been a great place for us to showcase the incredible things our students, our staff are doing, our programs. So just to give you guys some examples, last September, so September 2021, we reached a total of 5,800 people, with their engagement reaching around 1,200. Today, we're at 34,000 in reach and engagement totals 6,100. To showcase one of our schools, I didn't do all of them, but Summit Elementary, I just want to preface too, we have media specialists in each building, and they run the Facebook page, and they get their buildings involved, at least in pictures of what students are doing. Summit Elementary, they reached 1,240 people in September of 2021, and today they're sitting at 7,614. So it really is a group effort, and we are better together even on social media. So I hope that you guys have seen some of those. The district's reach on Instagram went from 157 in September 2021 to 357 this month. And then on Twitter, in September of 2021, we earned 123 impressions. This month, we're at 3,686 impressions. So Twitter, everyone kind of explained Twitter as our redheaded stepchild for a little while. But we are really working hard on growing all of our platforms so that wherever anyone is doing on social media, they are seeing the incredible things that we're doing as a district. Our consistency in our parent newsletters, to keep consistency with our newsletter distribution throughout the district, our leadership team developed a simple framework. So now the high school newsletter is emailed to its families once a week, our K-3 buildings email your newsletters once a month, and then the K-8 grade-level teams are emailing newsletters out to their families monthly. So our hope is that this gives families the information they want and need without overwhelming their inboxes, and the newsletters, I believe, are created on a common template, so that when families open them, and they're from different schools, they know where the information is, is at on each template. So if they want to just see one section, they know where that section is throughout the district and all of those things. Our transparency in curriculum, Karen might have to help me with this one a little bit. So we developed course description guides, which are on our websites, under each school's website. And within those guides, it provides a course summary and a link to the course syllabus. So the course syllabus includes basic information about the course, timelines for each block of study within the course, core values for grading and proficiency scales, retakes and redo's plan, keys to success, classroom expectations, and a message to parents. So it really gives parents everything they need to know about that course. With, I believe it gives the teachers contact information as well, so it really is one stop for all that information. And then, yeah, so the middle school and high school are the ones that are currently implementing that system, and we're hoping to bring it to the elementary, it just may look a little different as far as layout. But all of the course syllabi, again, are on the same template, so you know exactly where you can find the information when you open up the syllabus. And then one more point I want to bring to your guys' attention is for our middle school and high school, for the Summit Reel platform, this allows parents to see every resource for the entire year in one place, so when they log in on their side of things, they can see what their student is doing for the entire year, and they can see all the resources that the student has seen. Summit Reel also sends weekly progress reports and text messages, which I got one the other day, so I can't attest to this. And those are for parents who sign up for that service. High school also uses Google Classroom, and that sends out weekly updates to parents. I do want to say it also does daily, because I signed up for daily updates with my son, so I get an email at the end of the day every day. And that just helps us as parents sit down with our students and see all that has been assigned and the resources for that semester. So it really does help bring the parents into that partnership with their students and their educators.
So if you haven't been living under a rock for the last few months, you know that we're now a district of six schools, with the addition of Merritt Academy, so you don't have to look at it. So summer, during the summer, there's a lot of work to get all that set up. Von and I saw plenty of each other over...
I'm going to turn this way too.
Yeah, she's seen a lot of me too, yeah. She's probably seen me as well, it's kind of a team. But we worked all summer with, I don't know how many projects, I counted them at one point, and then there were projects within projects to make sure that we were all set up for the school year. And then, and there's still a couple of things that need to be completed, but in the school year, kids show up either way, and that's, and we get to stress test, you know, the system and all the things we put in place, and all the good ideas that we thought we had. And so with that started, now we have, and things are, I'm going to mention that survey as well, so that pulse check survey that Del mentioned, went out to students as well. And Von doesn't even know this, because I don't think she's seen the data, but one of the questions was, it was a similar question, like, how did the school year start? And the students at Woodland Park Middle School that indicated that the school year is off to a good start, something like 93, 94%. And that's with so much change, so much, I mean, it's, like, students weren't, you know, they knew there was going to be a lot of change as well, and they're reporting that the school year is off to a really great start. Doesn't mean there are issues that come up. So Woodland Park Middle School wasn't built to house two separate schools, which is why we had to put all these things in place, and once, and when school is running, we find that there are issues that come up that we didn't anticipate, some that we did, and many that we didn't. And we've really, so Merritt Academy administration, Woodland Park Middle School administration at the school level, really has taken on addressing things at the building level first. They're the ones that withhold the solutions that actually work. Find that, like, if stuff makes it here, the district office, we can have a lot of things that seem like great ideas, and then of course, find it's like, no, I was dumb, like, you didn't consider these, you know, these five things that we know on the ground. So in all that to say, both schools have taken that approach of addressing things at the building level, because they have the best solutions. In the meantime, both schools are learning how to be good roommates in all of this, and that's going well. There are, especially at the beginning of the year, there are things that come up that we didn't know would happen, and they're addressing them right. It comes with constant communication, and with schools being, and teachers and administrators always being solution-oriented, I think that's just kind of how we're, it's just kind of how we're programmed. And that means we're able to solve problems with best intentions, and we kind of take it one challenge at a time with all of this. So that's kind of coming from the source. You read about Merritt Academy weekly in the Courier and Mountain Jackpot probably at one point, but there are people in this room that have actually been on the ground making it work and say that we're moving right along, like, teachers at both schools are teaching, students are learning, and student needs are being met.
Apparently, they're happy.
Yeah, and they're reporting, yeah, they're reporting that they're very happy as well. So that's the super short update on kind of how things are doing with Woodland Park School District, taking around Merritt Academy as a mission.
And this came up because it was a question submitted, we asked for questions submitted. So some of the questions were, the question that came in was how are things are going, how things are going. So we thought we, you know, Yvonne's here, so she is there, and so I don't know anything that you want to add for the group, because I know it was a question that someone asked.
Yeah, I would say, overall, the day-to-day things are great. Luke and Rose here, the administrator's over at Merritt, and they meet with Bill, our assistant principal, and I, we meet every Monday. We go over calendar, we go over shared facilities, any concerns that may come up. And what I can say is, once we're in the classrooms, teaching and learning is happening. There's, like, right now, we, one of the things that hasn't been finished, that not because of Miles or Ron, is our doors are still like plywood doors, so, which are probably more expensive than the actual doors that might be, I don't know.
They're really nice, but...
And we're like, oh no, what's going to happen? There's been no breach of those doors whatsoever on either side. Our PE department shared the football field when we're outside, and really Luke and I were like, okay, well, let's do this and that, and then we're like, let's just talk to our PE teachers, and they just handle it. They're like, okay, we'll take this part of the field, you take this part of the field. The staff has been so supportive of each other. I know some of the Merritt staff that have some of their kids that go to our school, they'll walk by in the morning and drop their kids off, and you guys have been at high school in the morning, there's music playing and everything, and they wave hi and say hi, and some of our staff that have kids at Merritt, same thing. So the day-to-day and the kids' learning has been great. Parking has been interesting, it's crowded. Our hallways are very crowded at the middle school, at the Woodland Park side of the middle school, so that's created just more learning opportunities, I guess would be the best way to say it, you know, how do we truly... you know, how do we truly walk through a school? How do we--
When you're 12.
What?
When you're 12.
Yeah, or 11. Well, I would say 12, because 11-year-olds don't walk.
Yeah.
So, so that part has been, and we expected it, though. We knew you put more people in a smaller setting, and more things around to happen. So we're dealing with that and helping kids learn how to act in big groups. And then the parking is really, is really the big thing. Finding room for staff to park is fine, but I think for either school, you get volunteers, parent volunteers coming in.
How much do you get back?
There's, like, right now, I drive a truck, and I can't park my truck. I'll tell you, like, I, like, if I go shopping at Christmas time and there's not a place that I can, like, for where I can park it, I don't shop there. So, like, I'm nervous going back, like, well, am I gonna be able to park? So I'll try and get back to work today. So--
You might just have to take yours today.
Right. If it can be at my house, I know I'd park there.
If you need to walk to work, yeah.
Right. So, so that, but again, once the kids are inside in their classrooms, we haven't had any issues at lunchtime. The kids are, you know, well, only issue, issues we have had have been good. You know, where, like, a ball comes from one side to the other, and the kids are like, here you go, and, you know, so it's, they're kids. We're teaching them to be kind. We're teaching them to show tolerance and grace, because that's what we do as humans. So, and thank you.
So we've shared a lot of points of growth, and we know there's places, though, that we need to grow. So we do have some goals for this year of growth areas, and our leadership team really sat, as we started the year, and looked at, heard what we're proud of, but here's where we need to make some growth. And so we did latch a hold of the Better Together Rally Ride, because we just feel like, coming out of the pandemic, you know, we need to come back together. So as a community, we need to come back together, and we know that we're better together. The world is so complex that you just can't do it on your own. You gotta do it with a team. And so we latched on to these five ideas for growth areas for our district. One of them's around trust. It's evident to us that we, we have lost some trust, trusting relationships. We did, during the pandemic, bring our kids in and keep everyone out. We did that purposefully, because we wanted our kids in school, and we knew the only way in school was if we, like, brought them in, co-horted them, and put a little wall around them. And so we purposely did that, and we kept our kids in school during the pandemic more than any school in the region. So our kids were here more than anyone in the region. I had a kiddo at home who was in her senior year, and, because I, she's, we live down the pass, and she was home from March of her junior year to March of her senior year. So she was home. So our, I was coming to school, and she was at home. So we kept our kids in more, but as a result, we lost connections with people outside the school, because we went into an internal place. So we know we've got to come out and reestablish trusting relationships. Thus, our networking meetings, we've leaned, leaned into, if anyone's watched Brittany Brown with this graving, she talks about what trust looks like. If you haven't seen it, great one to look up. It defines the elements of trust, and we're going after those elements internally and externally. So we're really leaning into trust. We're leaning into building rigor. We realize our kids have some unlearned learning, but we've got to, we've got to be like, let's go, we have work to do, let's get you back up here, let's get our students here. We have high school students performing. As we came through the pandemic, our middle school and high school kids actually were growing while the state was going down. So we realized, like, oh, we need to not listen to this narrative about kids being behind, because our kids are actually ahead of where they've been. So we had to kind of shift that for our teachers of, like, no, ours up here, let's go, let's hold kids to a high standard of rigor. We realized, too, we needed to, with trust, kind of, you'll see a lot of these that go together, we need to learn, we've learned that mentoring is, is something we need to lean, lean into. So we have established that every kid in our system, K-12, has a dedicated mentor. That's a staff member that's sitting with that kid, writing goals, being like, I know you, and I'm gonna advocate for you here in this building, and I'm gonna help you set goals and get yourself on a pathway. At high school, those mentors are with them for four years. So they really know them by the time we launch them into the world. So we said, we are dedicated to mentoring, and we're training our teachers in how to be really good mentors, but we're also mentoring our staff. So we're putting energy, because we do have a third of our staff very veteran, but we've probably got a third very not veteran, and also some alternative licensure, people coming into second careers, like, learning to teach as they're going to school. So we're leaning into mentoring them. So we have mentoring, we're mentoring each other. So our admin team were like, get a buddy and have them look at all of your goals that are written in your building, let's make sure they're high. So we're leaning into mentoring relationships everywhere we can. Fostering stakeholder voice, again, in part of that trust, we want to hear stuff. So in a minute, we're gonna turn this to you guys and say, what can you tell us? What do we need to hear? What questions do you have? Because we need those voices to help guide us. We need those partnerships, so we need student voices, we need parent voices, we need community voices, we need staff voices to help guide us. And then safety always stays, it never drops off this list with the world we live in right now. We did rehire, if anyone knew Officer Goings, he did move on to a different job, we rehired for that position. So we are committed to our schools being safe. We have security guards in our middle school and high school. We have S-school resource officers in our buildings. If you've been to our buildings, we have vestibules, you can't just walk in, so you have to be buzzed in. So we have vestibules, and hopefully, they're scanning your license if you're coming in, unless you're one of our volunteers that we know. They're scanning our licenses, and what happens when we make that scan is we also have a quick background check on anyone entering our buildings. So we are real serious about the safety in our buildings, but we also know that the safety goes back to this, and you guys know that. When our kids feel connected and seeing, kind of that seeing, heard, and loved, we know that that's part of safety also. And when their mental health needs are taken care of, we know that's part of safety also. So it's kind of a two-pronged approach with our safety. So these are our focus areas that we're committed to working towards this year, and we're driving towards those. So our question to you, before we turn it over to questions and answers, is just how can we, as Woodland Park School District, connect with our churches and our pastors for the service of our community, but really for the service of our kids? Because we know we have common goals there. So I don't know if people have some brainstorming potential ideas or thoughts about how we partner together in this endeavor. If you don't, I have some, I have some potential things to get yours on.
When you were talking about the mentoring program, we've always thought, you know, how do we help mentor kids? How do we help come alongside? But are there ways that we can come alongside the teachers? And, because we've got retired teachers, we've got great leaders in our church that have done just about everything that you can think of doing. And to have them connect some way with teachers, to help mentor teachers that are needing some help, have you guys thought of that?
No, but that's a fabulous idea.
There'd be a bunch of people that would jump. We have a lot of young retirees. When I say young, sixty, fifty-five. No, they're not, they didn't wait till they were ancient before they retired, and they want to do stuff, and this could be a great thing for them.
That's a great one.
Most of them don't look at kids and go, yeah, I'm gonna jump in to help a child. But if they can help teachers, they would love them.
That's right. And I know, I think, community church, I know last year when we did, it wasn't mentoring teachers, but the impact of last January, we welcomed back our teachers, I think it was Jan, February, we welcomed back our teachers for a PD day, and we had the red carpet rolled out. And I know a lot of our churches came and were there to be like, yay, like paparazzi, as well as, I know, contribute five-dollar gift cards. Like, every staff got a five-dollar gift card, just human being, and teachers were just like, wow, this is so amazing. So that, thank you. That, that was really impactful, but I had not thought, Kelly's capturing notes, I had not thought about mentoring opportunities. I don't know for some of the youth pastors or human pastors in the room to think about our break activities. So if you are interested, I believe it's every Tuesday morning, Laura meets Laura Magason here at the district, they have a meeting every Tuesday, I could give you the time, and they plan those activities. So it's a weekly meeting, and they put things on the books for activities. Or even if you call us and said, hey, in October break, we'll do, I mean, a lot of you have some really nice spaces, like gyms and, and things like that, we'll do a gym, we'll do arts and crafts, we'll take kids for a walk, we'll, some other fun thing that somebody loves to do, that kids would love also. You know, if you're willing to partner with that, we'd always look for people that are willing, or someone that says, hey, I'm willing to go to Golden Bell with them and, you know, play blacklight volleyball, or go to the dinosaur museum with a group of kids or meet them. We would love to have some, some people.
What time is that every Tuesday morning?
I will have to look, I should have written that down. Will you look on the calendar?
Yeah.
The room is reserved. Lindsay's gonna get you one.
Yeah.
So we invite you to join us. The other thing, too, that is maybe an easy one, because what, what we look at is, you have a nice audience. Sometimes we host parent events, like, high school did a big kick for Better Together and kicked off the school year and published it, and two parents came. But I know sometimes you have people that are, that are in your audiences. We are all, if you find that your congregation or your group says, we really wish we knew more about social media and my kids, or how to support, you know, my kiddos doing this, we have experts here that can come do presentations. We just, when we offer them, we can't always get them, we can't connect the people with the presentation. I know coming up in November, I believe, we'll be offering another screen, another viewing, if anyone attended Screenagers. Screenagers was a viewing about how social media is affecting you, and it gives great parenting ideas. We would love to be able to send flyers out for the churches even to say, hey, this is a great thing for our parents or our community members, grandparents, people that work with any kids, to understand the impact of social media on our students. It's huge and scary. So understanding, how do I work with that? Because if you've worked with the middle school kid, just taking things away doesn't always, doesn't always help. And so it talks about having great conversations and writing social contracts with parents and child. So know that we offer some events like that. In the spring, we offer the Expo. So the Expo's a big event where parents and families can come and basically learn about anything that will happen in the summer. So if you have vacation Bible school or things at your church, we invite you to come have a table at our Expo, because the goal is parents can come and be like, oh, I'm gonna go to camp, and I'm gonna do this, and then I'm gonna go do arts and crafts. It lets parents plan their summer, all in one location. So know that we'll, we'll send that information out, too, and you can come in and have a table, connect, or even let your, your people know, here's where you go to see what to do with your kids in the summer. A lot of people that have kids here, I mean, I was like, how do I find stuff for them to do in the summer? The last part I had, too, was just, we are still looking, we are staffed in the classroom, FTEs for teachers, we are still looking for parent educators, so people that work with often our special education kids, positions, and we've even said, we'll do any schedule. So if someone says, I only want to do a kid's schedule, so I'll drop my kid off, come to school, leave school, pick my kid up, we're like, great, we'll hire you for that. I'll only come for happiness. Great, we'll hire you for that. I can come at lunch. Great, we'll hire you for that. We have parent educator openings still in every building, almost.
Gateways full.
We have--
Through a phone. I just posted.
Yep, so--
We have, we have guest teacher needs. We, we have a very, we've hired most of our guest teachers as teachers. So we have a need for guest teachers, because what happens is when we don't have guest teachers, staff have to cover. So they don't get planning periods. So some of it is, like, the teacher didn't call me back, and it's like, well, they actually haven't had a planning period all week, because they've been covering for teachers that are gone.
What's a guest?
Substitute teacher.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. We call them guests, because some sound so, yeah, but they're a guest teacher. So it's a substitute teacher, so someone that comes and fills in when the teachers are gone, because when we don't have them, our admin does it, or--
Nobody wants to be teaching a math class.
Our counselors do it, or our teachers go during, like-- How often do you go during planning and cover?
Couple of times a week.
So that means no planning to prepare for kids, or to call parents or answering emails or things like that. We also continually have need for bus drivers, van drivers, stick custodians. We are continually understaffed. So if you have, I would guess, we see that you guys have some connections. If you have people that you know that are looking for jobs, with great benefits, we have a retirement plan with parent, so it is a great, and we're willing to work with all sorts of schedules. So I know we gave you a flyer that was about jobs we have, so we would love that connection. And I guess our quick connection is how do we help support you also?
I was gonna say, on October 26th, our community pastors have been invited to our warm-up on Wednesdays at the middle school. If you haven't heard about it, it's a must-see. Need to be there. We just, every Wednesday, we have groups of people just welcoming our kids, because middle school kids are weird, and they don't know how to interact with other humans. Right? And so, so, and it's been amazing watching over the last, into its, what, seventh or eighth year now, where as soon as now, just, like, if somebody's not there on Wednesday, they're like, do they not care about us? Who is supposed to be here today? But they, like, look up and say hello and interact, and it's great for me to see all the connections that kids have around the community. So if your church hasn't heard about it, from 7:30 to 8:05, you can come and help welcome our kids into school. And I know I have youth pastors come in once a week, whenever they can, for lunch duty at lunchtime, just during the day, hang out with the kids. And it is so nice, because they sit down, get lunch with the kids, they connect. I see the kids, some of my kids in a whole different light, because they would never act that way in front of their youth pastor. So this is really neat. But what I would also love is, if there is something that churches need, that I can get a group of kids to volunteer to help clean up your ground, I mean, my goodness, community church helped, not helped, painted our gym last year.
That's amazing.
Saved us $70,000. I mean, just overwhelmed me. Just overwhelmed me.
Yeah. And it was helped, really.
You know, it, it costs us maybe $1,000 in a few pieces. So how can we give back also? How can we help our kids learn the parts of service to give back? So are there things that your churches need or you know would need from the community? Let us know, because we can legally get students and parents with signed permissions, you know, to come help out, even if it's just breaking up some hindrances and things like that. So let us know how we can help, too.
And that community meeting is every Tuesday from 10 to 12. Tuesday from 10 to 12. Every Tuesday, right here in this room, Laura serves smoothies, so maybe you'll like smoothies better than pastries. And they basically plan, right now they're planning October, and then they'll switch to the, up to Thanksgiving and Christmas. So it kind of goes really fast, like, every time you turn around, we're greasing. So I'm gonna open the floor, the last slide we have, and, oh, sorry--
I just got one, one more. Along the line of student safety, and it's one of the things I'm sure you're all aware of and probably are addressing, but one of the things that is really becoming prevalent in our communities across the nation, and it is leaking into Woodland Park, is unfortunately the fentanyl issue, right? So if you haven't learned or know what fentanyl is, yeah, it's scary. It's really a situation where we can find tragedy really fast. So you will be seeing from the school side, some programming coming in, some safety measures put in. We're also working on guest speakers to come in to present to our community. But sometimes-- But sometimes you guys have the connections, you guys are probably already doing this, I don't know. But, you know, they, they may not listen to a teacher or a principal saying, you know, the famous don't do drugs, right, or don't do fentanyl. But they might have a little more connection on the church side. And so it is a true community issue. So it's not a school issue, it's not a church issue. It is truly, it knows no bounds. Everybody, you're kind of aware of fentanyl, what's going on?
Rainbow.
Yeah, rainbow, they're targeting, some of them, it looks like Skittles. And it, it's crazy. And it, it can, it can harm a youth tragically, or adult tragically, in a matter of seconds. So that's something I think that we need to partner on across the whole community, is to start to figure out how to keep our people, in particular in our business, your business, our, our youth, safe. So we'd be able to look out for some of those materials that we'll have, and some of those things that we'll be putting out. We have to help fill our auditorium or whatever we need. Or things that we can do in the school that can help you, and we're, we're working with our, with our community. So I know that's a depressing topic, but it's a huge topic. Look around school safety, so just working with that.
So we'll turn the floor to you for any questions, answers, thoughts, feedback for us, we would love to hear. And it can be for the group, or it could be for the, or really, just to post it after too, for any, any chat.
This is for, this is going to say, it's very trivial, but my wife, she's a grandmother, so we had a student needed to show up to pick him up. And the signs said, go to the front door, and she, she went to the rec door the first time. And then she circumnavigated the entire school, because the signs kept saying, go to the.
Just keep walking.
She's 70 years old.
So she got her work out in that.
Just a heads up.
So we have new signage, actually, that we went over last week.
It's been ordered, yeah, it's been ordered into production.
Yes.
Because it is, it is competing.
Yes. Thank you. Any other thoughts? Questions for us?
Getting to know the people in our congregation, some of them might be interested in some of these things that you have here, really interesting, by the way. But do you have a list of contacts for, if, or they just need to come on Tuesdays and see what's going on? Or do you have a list of contacts for, like, the mentorship and apprenticeships and things like that, that they can get involved with and help with?
I think if you just, and I should have brought in, we could, we could bring in some business cards. Probably if you just even direct them to Del or I, we can get them to the right people.
Okay.
That's probably the fastest way to be like, contact these two people, and they will get you in touch with the right people. We do have on the website a list, but sometimes you have to wade through all the, you know, versus someone that says, I'd love to mentor kids or staff. We'd be like, okay, we're gonna connect you with this person. So if you just shoot us an email, if you go back, I'll, I'll back. Our names were here at the start. And at the schools, it's really our first initial last name. So like, mine is TCassens@wpstk12.org. So feel free, I would say I'll speak for Del, feel free for, to email either of us, and we can just get that connection right away to the right person.
Thank you.
You can give us an email. So I put a forward on how many emails to you.
To you. And that's why I made that box so long. And we would, we would encourage you, as we are looking to build these relationships, if you hear things that seem awfully, wow, I can't believe that that's happening, again, give us a call, email us, and be like, I heard this, talk to me about that. Because what we find is sometimes people call and they're like, yeah, like, six months ago, I heard, I say, wow, I wish you would call, we could have clarified and realized that there was some misinformation or things that we needed to fix or. So please, we encourage, reach out and connect. And we'll keep sending stuff. So if you don't want it, tell us too. We'll keep connecting with you, but let us know how we can, we can partner. Because we want to partner together to just bring unity to our community. You know we're better together. We are better together.
Do all have those stickers.
So I saw, you know, you had different clubs at the very beginning. I know that Fellowship Christian Athletes is getting quite a bit here. They have a new director that's coming up and working with several different school districts. This is one of them. Are there other clubs that are more on the spiritual side? You guys, because that's FCA.
Yep.
To an extent. Are there different things that you would like to see happen? Or can you try to stay away from the, the more on the spiritual side? Where are you at?
So I, I do know that yesterday, there was supposed to be a prayer around the pole. And it was that Warm Welcome Wednesday, and the kids were a little bit intimidated to go out. So we had a prayer in the commons type thing. So I know there are different pieces like that that go on, National Day of Prayer, things like that. We, you know, we bring them in. I do know in the past, we've had some of our pastors mentor students as well, you know, with parent permission and all of that, so that's gone on. What other, like, organized clubs do you guys have that, that we could look to bring in?
We don't have an organized club now, but we, if there's something that could be started, we can be a part of that.
Yeah, and I think we tend to drive a lot off of, our clubs tend to drive off of students. Obviously, the little flippy skateboard.
Tech deck.
Tech deck. When our kids come and say, I'd really love to start this club, we're like, let's get you a sponsor. And so really, it's off of students. I know we've had some book studies in the past.
Last year, we had one that a student brother wanted to do a book study with, with something. And I'm like, all right, let's look at who sponsors can be. And I think it was a parent who came in. We always have like, an adult sponsor, so the adult would, our teacher would stay in her classroom during lunch, but a parent was leading, actually saying a book of the Bible.
So are, most of the clubs led from the inside, student, student-driven, rather than somebody else?
Yeah, and they tend to be student-driven, and the kids ask about a club, and we're like, great, let's, let's see what we can do.
But if there's something in you group that you guys are talking about, that it sounds like, that'd be awesome to have during the day, tell them. I mean, at the most, we'll tell them to come talk to me. I'm sure at the high school, talk to anybody that's here. And we'll go through the right process that we have for, for kids to join that.
Well, we appreciate you all coming, and we will stick around. All of us are here, board members are here, if you want to chat with our board or our admin team. We still have pastries. I know our dad's outside, Al and Lava's are gonna love it, if you need them. But we thank you for, because I know your town is valuable and precious. So we thank you for coming in and connecting. We ask that, spread the word. Like, let people know that we're here to partner and vice versa. Call us when you need stuff, we'll call too. So, thank you, guys.